Good evening, welcome to the March 6th meeting of the Newmarket Town Council. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to open, well first I'd like to mention that councilors Finch and Cast are excused tonight, they're away on business, and then I'd also like to mention that we dedicate this year's Newmarket Town Annual Report to the Shopmire Park Committee, many of them are here tonight, and I'm just going to read the dedication. It is with great pleasure that the 2018 Annual Town Report is dedicated to a group of local citizens who together created both a memorial and a park for the citizens of our community. Following the unfortunate passing of local resident Chris Shopmire, another resident, Mr. Walter Cheney, brought forth an idea that a piece of conservation property in his honor would be a fitting legacy for Mr. Shopmire. This simple concept was presented to Richard Shelton, and that began what initially seemed a simple task: find a property, raise some money, purchase the land, and hang a sign. A committee was formed by Richard Shelton in 2016 with the members each offering their particular experience: Dennis Abbott as coordinator, Val Shelton with her real estate background, Jeff Goldthoff, Chair of the Conservation Committee employed by Dusset Surveying, Richard Hight, fishing derby organizer, Ellen Snyder, land use consultant, and Amy Girganda for representing the town recreation department. In addition, various other individuals and local companies offered assistance as the project evolved from a piece of conservation land to a memorial park. Leo Manzo represented the community church, Dick Laude representing the Lamprey River Advisory Committee, Elizabeth Dudley, landscape architect, and David Legault as general handyman and groundskeeper. Lastly, Chris's wife, Terri, brought her ideas for the development of the property. The creation of the park required that an idea be turned into something tangible and real. A sizable contribution from the Cheney Corporation provided the required funding to begin the process, and a fundraising campaign procured another matching donation for the Cheney Corporation in the amount of $50,000. No town funds were expended. Generous contributions from the Lamprey River Advisory Group, Federal Law Enforcement Officers Association, Hamel Builders, and numerous small donations plus in-kind donations brought in enough monies to match the Cheney Company donation. With money in hand, the committee of Richard Shelton, Dennis Abbott, and Val Shelton set about finding a suitable, affordable piece of property that met the goal of simply placing a sign designating the property as the Shopmire Conservation Area. Numerous properties were considered, but most had unresolvable issues or were more costly than the budget allowed. Finally, the property behind the thrift shop on North Main Street was considered as an ideal location for what could become more than a simple piece of conservation property. In what became a mutually beneficial arrangement for both the church and town, a lifetime lease was finalized. At this time, a series of decisions were made to develop the property by constructing a parking lot, memorial area with granite benches, and a suitable markings, a garden and a dock on the Lamprey River. Development required surveying work led by Jeff Goldthoff permitting by the Department of Environmental Services and coordination with Leo Manzo representing the community church. Each step along the way involved much thought and effort by the members of the committee. Finally, on July 21, 2018, a dedication ceremony was held on site with many Shopmire family members in attendance, several hundred citizens and committee members in attendance, as a culmination of a project intended to have a lasting benefit to the town and a fitting memorial to our friend, Chris Shopmire. The project is still evolving, and some projects are yet to be completed. Some are planned and possibly some uses have not yet been considered. A special thank you to the committee members for their efforts in creating this park as another example of what makes Newmarket the special place it is. Well done. And I agree with everything written there. That's a tremendous job. Yes, please do.
When we took this project one three years ago, we've got it probably 80% complete now. Some things we've got to wrap up here is we've got to get the sign made for the rules and regulations. We've got a Boy Scout working right now for his Eagle Scout badge to erect a flagpole with a solar light on it at the park. I haven't heard from him lately, but I guess they're working on it. And we have some additional work to do with the floats and we're still deciding what we're going to put for a kayak launch at Ashland Floats. I think we've got enough money to finish there. On May 10, Liberty Mutual volunteers will spend a day at the park helping sprucing it up, I guess a lot of trimming down around the water and clearing out some of the wooded area where the Boy Scouts might use it for a team build through the summer when they have a chance. But other than that, we're pretty good along. Where the boathouse used to be up on the land, there's an indentation in there, and we're hoping somehow with some help we can get that filled and level it out. Where the boathouse was, they pulled the boat up in there, there's like a big gully there now, and it should be filled. Probably one truck will fill it if the water does. My park gets dry enough so you can drive down there. It's been wet all four. But other than that, it's pretty much underway, and I just got a park to get and leave you. And these are, this will be the rules and regulations that will be on the side. And here's a list of all the people that have helped and support us. And I'll leave that with you. And to see somebody that, I owe the, I mean, we've double-checked this, we've done everything. I think we've got every person that made a donation for that park, in kind and as well as monetary refunds, they're all in there. Thank you. Thank you very much for your efforts and for all of your efforts. We really appreciate some, true. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we have another presentation. And I, so I just want to say that I'm thankful to have the opportunity to thank our outgoing council members. I cry all the time, and this is no different. So, sorry. Usually this is the chair's job, but seeing as how our chair is one of the outgoing members, this task falls to me. So, town government is vital for a healthy community. And we saw last night, or yeah, last night, at the town candidates forum that we had, thankfully, a pretty robust discussion and a packed audience, and it was really nice to see. We are so fortunate to have people in our community who are willing to serve. Kyle Boden has been on the council for the past three years. He's a business owner, a community member, a father, a coach, I'm sure many other things. So, we're grateful for his service to the town and for our community. Dale Pike has served on the town council for the past six years. During that time, he served on numerous committees, but I think most notably, and where he's made the most lasting impact is the McAllen Dam Committee and the Shared Services Committee. Newmarket will benefit from your leadership in these areas for years to come. In addition, Dale has served as chair for the past two years, and I'm grateful for his service and for his leadership. So, I believe when I, I believe I can speak for the entire council when I say that you will both be missed.
Thank you very much.
And I will try not to cry.
Thank you very much.
And Dale's. That's for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Well, with that, and my, I just will say for both of us, thank you so much for the kind words as well as the very well-received gift. That'll be nice on my mantelpiece, so I thank you. And with that, we will close public forum at 7:12. And moving on, we would accept a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 20th meeting.
Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Report of the town administrator, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On my written report, the first item is that the chair, vice-chair, and I have been working on the annual calendar for the town council. This calendar outlines items that the council should address annually. It would be a framework for future council work off of. We provided a draft copy of that calendar in my report. If you see anything missing or any other items, just let me know, we can add it. This will be including orientation packets for the new councilors as well as materials that sitting councils will receive after the election. So, just for informational purposes. I provided an election day schedule. Counsel Boden informed me you can't be there from that portion. That brings us down to that we have a quorum present. I need to make sure all four members are there to certify the vote at the end of the night, because the other two councils are out of town, so I just need to make sure of that so we can have the vote certification.
I'll be there.
I've talked to Don Jettin of the Municipal Resources to discuss the financial services shakeout review. I can have a written report at this time. We agreed that it'd probably be an hourly fee, just because it won't be that many hours to do it. He quoted me $120 an hour to do this, which is a normal rate. The two individuals that will be conducting the review will be the finance director, former finance director of Meredith Hampshire, and the former business administrator of Hoister of School District. So, two people have the background in both sides of services. What they're going to do is sit down with myself, the superintendent of schools, then interview individuals of both departments, the town finance department and the school finance department, then report back to myself and the superintendent, and we'll have a final report for both boards after that. Since it's not, it's under my authority to spend, it's not over $10,000, I'll just sign the contract when I receive it. On my unwritten report, today I went and testified on two bills in the Senate, State Senate. One was to the postponement of town meetings. We're still trying to hammer out a deal. As you know, the last two years, we never have a blizzard on election day, and this year, the weather, everybody looked at it and said it's not going to be this year. We've had two blizzards on town meeting day. And there's questions whether or not there's provision in the law that allows it, the town moderator to postpone it. We held our elections both those times, others postponed it. This will clarify what we can and cannot do it for. Whether, if the bill passes, it'll be triggered by if there's a warning from the National Weather Service, then the moderators then can review whether or not we should postpone an election. If there's other emergencies such as fire, violence, anything like that, the moderator would have to consult with the emergency management director and the police chief and the fire chief to determine whether or not any postponements would happen then. It sounds, you know, seems like we have an agreement between the Secretary of State's Office, the Municipal Association, and municipalities, so it seems like this is a good compromise bill and get there. The second bill I went and testified on was there's a bill introduced by Senator Guy from the central part of the state that would not allow taxpayers' dollars to go towards lobbying, which is basically that we would no longer be able to be a member of the National Municipal Association, which if you use that, then there's, can't be any more county associations. The state can't be a member of the state league that lobbies to the federal level. So, we tried to explain to them what the impact of that was, and hopefully that does not go forward. You know, the purpose of the Municipal Association is so that all the 234 municipalities in the state have a common voice in Concord. They express our feelings in Concord, and on the flip side, they review all the thousands of bills that are introduced every year and determine what's going to impact us, and then brings it back to the municipalities. You should all get legislative bulletins and information for them about what's going on, and that's what they do, they help us out that way. They don't lobby on anything that municipalities don't agree on, is the policy setting process that we've discussed. So, that's why they asked me to come up and support, you know, the defeat of that bill. So, that's two items I was addressing today. And finally, I want to take this opportunity to thank Counselors Pike and Boden. Counsel Boragat's worked with the last three years, it's been a great time. I mean, your knowledge on technology is very helpful, very, been very helpful for myself and I know the staff. And Counsel Pike, you came on right after I started, and it's been really great, been working on many projects. I think we moved the town forward. And on behalf of the staff and department heads, myself, I want to thank you both for your service and come by any time you want. That's all for today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I just had, anybody else have any comments on the administrator's report? I just would ask, did the contract, is that going to be discussed, the school board, a little report like you have, are they going to discuss that as well?
As soon as I-
Because there were school board members that were curious about-
Yeah, as soon as I get a written proposal, I'm going to give it to the superintendent. Their process is different than ours, so I've got to, as soon as I get the written one, I'll provide it to them.
Okay, great. And the other thing, I'll just mention the calendar. It was sort of a little bit of a pet project of mine as well, and I would point out that just to show you how it can get ahead of you, where you're already behind on your calendar as a new council.
And we realize it when we were sitting there last week going over the calendar.
So, I think one of the things that we talked about then, and I think it will be a useful thing, is to sort of start, when you get your council together, one of your sort of organizing things will be to look and kind of pencil these things in on your coming calendar, because it will help you to know things that are coming and use the meetings where you have some room to try to keep things on track. Because otherwise you'll think, oh, this is a quiet meeting, and then you realize, well, holy smokes.
Second that.
We're going to have long meetings next month, so that's-
I have one comment.
Sure.
This is a different subject, and I don't know if this is entirely the right time to bring it up, but I mentioned this to the town administrator. I had gotten some correspondence asking, talking about what is the correspondence section of our agenda, and to be honest, I couldn't quite define when we say that we have correspondence and when we don't. And so, I think, I just wanted to mention it because for the councilors, I think when we talk about rules and council proceedings at our next meeting, it will be important to add that to the conversation. So, that's all.
Okay. Then I will, any more, any committee reports? Seeing none, we move on to Resolution 2018-19-28, lease purchase interest. I'd accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-28, lease purchase interest. The Director of Fire Facilities will discuss.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-28. Second.
Based on advice of our co-councilor, the interest that would be paid for the duration of the note that we would have for the energy upgrades should be brought forward, and so this resolution does that. I will say I had one typo. The interest rate's 4.28, not 4.27, which is, didn't change the figures because the figures were based on the 4.28, not on the 4.27. It was strictly a typo on my part, and I apologize for that. But the figures are all correct in there, and so we're looking to get acceptance of recognizing the interest over the term of the note, which is for 20 years.
If the council, if that's a script, is there not really a substantive one, so we can just change the resolution so you can sign that without having to make an amendment?
Okay. Any other comments about that?
I just have a question, I guess.
Sure.
Because we approved the lease agreement back a while ago.
Correct.
And so, what exactly is the reason to bring this? Just to make us aware of the-
Yeah, when the town attorney was reviewing all the documents and reviewing the resolutions adopted, it was determined that yes, we need to make sure that we acknowledge that there's an additional funds that are being paid in interest. So, that's what we're acknowledging this right now.
Okay. Question. Are there any other funds that could be used to help draw down the 1.144563?
What we're using is some of the building maintenance capital reserve funds, but what we're doing to pay back the lease is the savings that we have from the energy efficiencies that we don't have to pay.
Understood.
So, there's not really another fund we're going to go to, but some of the funds are coming from, correct me if I'm wrong, from the roof at the DBW. That's going to be coming from the building capital reserve fund.
Not so much the roof, but the engineering, design, and potential structural repairs is coming out of the building ground reserve.
Okay.
What we don't have in here is rebates, for instance, and because we won't know exactly what those are until we actually get through some of the process, we don't include those. So, there is potential other funding that is going to be coming in at some point when we know what that is. But we won't know until, you know, our things like FSWS actually gives us the approvals, because we have to submit and ask approvals for what we're trying to get done. So, there are rebate monies that will be still out there.
Okay, so this, that number could go down?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just looking at the interest over the life of the lease, it's a lot of money. I think, I don't think anyone's going to disagree with that, but I was rethinking about the other funds, if there are funds, whether it's capital reserve or anything else that-
With capital projects in sight, we probably had to go up to bond, with the number of projects we're doing. We don't have the capital reserve covered or the operating budget to make a significant decrease. That's why we're going with the performance-based financing of the project, that the money we save from energy saving goes back to paying off the lease.
You could go to bond, okay.
Yeah, I'd add too that it's always a little bit misleading, to me at least. I don't know how other people feel, but when you, it's like when you take out a mortgage and you look at how much interest you're paying over the life of the loan. But part of what is wrapped up in that interest is the fact that, you know, this $588,000 is a mix of dollars that are $2019 and $2039. And, you know, I can tell you when I bought my house here, 20 years ago, I moved to New Market, bought the house, and you couldn't buy a house, you know, it's inflation is what I'm getting at. So, the interest dollars is, in some way, if you discounted it for inflation for the future dollars that are going to be spent, it would represent, you know, a significantly lower amount of money. That's sort of how I rationalize that. But I think it's always misleading, you know, because we, I had to sort of make this case when we were talking about the school, when people were talking about bonding, and you look at that interest upfront as if it's all in today's dollars, and it's not. Any other comments?
Please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. Resolve, accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-29, amending the membership of the Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. The vice-chair will discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-29.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Dumont.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-30, Grants to Reconstruct the Leverland Creek Crossing at Bayroads. Town administrator will discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-30.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It was sort of a, a little bit of a pet project of mine as well. And I, I would point out that just to show you how, how it can get ahead of you where you're already behind on your calendar as a new council.
And we realize it when we were sitting there last week going over the calendar.
So, I, I think one of the things that we talked about then, and I think it will be a useful thing, is to sort of start, when you get, get your council together, one of your, sort of organizing things will be to look and kind of pencil these things in on, or you, on your coming calendar, because it will help you to, to know things that are coming and that, and, and use the meetings where you have some room to try to, to keep things on track. Because otherwise you'll think, oh, this is a quiet meeting, and then you realize, well, holy smokes.
Second.
We're gonna have long meetings next month, so, uh, that's...
I have one comment.
Sure.
Um, this, a different subject, and I don't know if this is entirely the right time to bring it up, um, but I mentioned this to the town administrator. I had gotten some correspondence asking, or talking about what is the correspondence section of our agenda, and to be honest, I couldn't quite define when we, when we say that we have correspondence and when we don't, and, um, and so I think, I just wanted to mention it because for the councilors, I think when we talk about rules and council proceedings at our next meeting, um, it will be important to add that to the conversation, so, that's all.
Okay. Then I will, any more, any committee reports? Seeing none, uh, we move on to Resolution 2018-19-28, lease purchase interest. I'd accept a, a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-28, lease purchase interest. The Director of Facilities will discuss.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-28.
Second.
Based on advice of our local council, uh, the interest that would be paid for the duration of the note that we would have for the energy upgrades, um, should be brought forward, and so this resolution does that. I, I will say I had one typo. The interest rate's four point two eight, not four point two seven, which is, didn't change the figures because the figures were based on the four point two eight, not on the four point two seven. It was strictly a typo on my part, and I apologize for that. Uh, but the figures are all correct in there, and so, uh, we're looking to get acceptance of recognizing the interest over the term of the note, which is for twenty years.
If the council, if that's a script, is there not really a substantive one, so we can just change the resolution so you can sign that without having to make an amendment?
Okay. Any other comments about that?
I just have a question, I guess.
Sure.
Um, because we approved the, the lease agreement, um, back a while ago.
Correct.
And, so, what exactly is the reason to bring this? Just to make us aware of the...
Yeah, it, when the town attorney was reviewing all the documents and reviewing the resolutions adopted, it was determined that, yes, we need to make sure that we acknowledge that there's an additional, uh, funds that are being paid, being paid interest. So that's what we're acknowledging this right now.
Okay. Question. Are there any other funds that could be used to help draw down the one point, one, four, four, five, six, three?
What we're using is, um, some, some of the building maintenance capital reserve funds, but what we're doing to pay back the lease is the savings that we have from the energy efficiencies.
Understanding.
That we have to pay. So there's not really another fund we're gonna, we can go to, but some of the funds are coming from, correct me if I'm wrong, from the roof at the DBW. That's gonna be coming from the building capital reserve fund.
Uh, not so much the roof, but the engineering design and, and potential structural repairs is coming out of the, the building ground reserve.
Okay.
Um, what we don't have in here is rebates, for instance, um, and because we won't know exactly what those are until we actually get through some of the process, we don't include those, so there is potential other funding that is going to be coming in at, at some point when we know what that is, uh, but we, we won't know until, until, you know, our, uh, things like FSWS actually gives us the approvals, because we have to submit and ask approvals for what we're trying to get done, so there are rebate monies that will be still out there.
Okay, so this, that number could go down?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Um, I'm just, just looking at the, the interest over the life of the lease, it's, it's a lot of money. Um, I think, I don't think anyone's gonna disagree with that, but I was rethinking about the other funds, if there are funds, whether it's, um, capital reserve or anything else that...
With capital proj, uh, projects this large, we probably had to go up to bond with the number of projects we're doing. We don't have the capital reserve uncovered, you know, or the operating budget to make a significant decrease. That's why we're going with the, uh, performance-based, um, financing of the, the project, that the money we save from energy saving goes back to paying off the, the lease.
You're gonna go to bond, okay.
Yeah, I, I'd add too, that it's always a little bit misleading, to me at least. I don't know if, how other people feel, but when you, it's like when you take out a market and you look at how much interest you're paying over the life of the loan. But part of what is, is wrapped up in that, that interest is the fact that, you know, this five hundred and eighty-eight thousand is a mix of dollars that are nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen dollars and twenty thirty-nine dollars. And, and you know, and if, you know, I, I can tell you when I bought my house here, twenty years ago, I moved to Newmarket, bought the house, and you couldn't buy a house, you know, it's, inflation is what I'm getting at. So the interest dollars is, 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 in some way, if you discounted it for inflation for the future dollars that are gonna be spent, it would represent a, you know, a significantly lower amount of money. That, that's sort of how I rationalize that, but, um, I think it's always misleading, you know, because we, we, I, I had this, sort of made this case when we were talking about the school, when people were talking about bonding, and you look at that interest upfront as if it's all in today's dollars, and it's, and it's not. Uh, any other comments? Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Boden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Uh, resolu, I'm, accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-29, amending the membership of the Energy and Environment, uh, Environment Advisory Committee. The Vice Chair will discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve 2018-2019-29.
Second.
It's you.
So, I'm happy to talk about this. Um, we formed the Energy and Environment Committee about a year ago, a little over a year ago, and, um, the original makeup of the committee was one town counselor and then representatives from the, um, the Planning Board and Conservation Commission, and we haven't been able to get representatives from the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, um, aside from in the ver, the very first, uh, couple of meetings. So, um, in light of that, we wanted to change the makeup of the committee, um, to entirely at-large members. Um, so it was those members plus, um, three at-large members, and so now we just want it to be entirely at-large members. Um, and we've had interest in people who, who want to participate in the, in the committee, um, so I, I don't think that we're gonna have a hard time finding people to, um, to be a part of it.
That's one member of the town council, and six?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Boden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-30, grants to reconstruct the Leverland Creek crossing at Bayroads. Town Administrator will discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-30.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as the council knows, that the Nature Conservancy and the town have been working on a project since 2014 to upgrade, um, a culvert at Leverland Creek. It has been flooding on our portion and has overtopped at least five times since 2006, as well as, um, the Nature Conservancy sees it as beneficial to open up the tidal flow for the Leverland Creek and that area. So we've been working together, um, we estimated the project to be about four hundred thousand dollars. I'm happy to say that we've received two grants totaling two hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. Uh, one for two hundred thousand dollars came from the Aquatic Resource Mitigation Fund, and the other, yeah, it's the seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars out of the Coastal Resilience Grant Program. The remaining funds, towns matching funds will be in-kind services with the Public, Department of Public Works doing, um, a lot of helping with the project as well, so total for the town will be only thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Uh, while I have authority to accept grants, uh, this is, this one, uh, is required that the governing body, uh, accept it, so, uh, approving this would allow me to au, authorize me to adjourn with agreement to accept these grants.
Any comments from anybody?
I have a quick one. So this is another one of those projects that has been in the works for so long, and it's just, it's, I think I was on the charter, or on the Conservation Commission when it, it came, in, in, for some reason it came before the Charter Commission at, or the Conservation Commission, I keep saying that, um, in 2015, and so just to see, like, these steps and see, like, the McAllen Dam move forward, it's, it's kind of an exciting time, so it's nice to see this happening.
Yeah, I, I'll add along those lines. I think there have been, in my years on the council, examples like this, where we've had a really beneficial relationship with the Nature Conservancy, and it's, I, I know I'm, I really am very happy that we have them as a, as a, as a resident of our town, that they have their regional headquarters in our town, and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's beneficial to all parties, and it's a, and it's a beautiful area out there for any citizen that hasn't walked the Sweet Trail or been out to Great Bay in that, that area, or visited the Nature Conservancy, uh, headquarters, or I would add, they have some, they have really, some really nice programs. There's one I did last spring that's called The Big Night, where you go, went out there, and there were just amphibians, salamanders everywhere. You, it, they don't show most of the time, so it's really, it's, it's a cool place to come up, to plug into sometime. And there have been, you know, along that line, and looking back over the years, you know, we've had, I was, I had a chance to be on a committee on saltwater intrusion with UNH. There are a lot of organizations and, uh, UNH and nature conservancies that are, that are our neighbors, that we have very bank, beneficial partnerships with, and, uh, this is a great, great example of that, so... Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Boden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And I would accept a motion to approve Resolution 2018-19-31, asbestos and boiler removal. The Director of Facilities will discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2019-31.
Second.
Good evening again. Uh, this particular project comes into the energy management projects, uh, since it's asbestos, our contractors will not touch it, it becomes our kind of thing that we have to deal with. So the original boiler to this building is still in this building, it is wrapped in asbestos, um, it needs to be removed to allow for the new plants to be installed, so what you have in front of you is the cost, we put it up to a bid, the cost to remove the asbestos and boiler plant, as well as having our industrial hygienist oversee the, uh, project for legal federal recording and things like that, and have, are required as part of getting rid of asbestos.
Any questions or comments?
Is, is it typical that it happened, that that's the structure of, um, these sorts of projects, that there's an oversight group, um, or, or, a firm that's providing oversight to the people doing the actual removal?
When it comes down to these particular hazardous waste type or level projects, yes it is, um, we rely on their expertise to make sure that all the federal and state and local filings that have to go along with that chain of custody's are all followed properly to protect the, the town.
Basically, if something was disposed of, you probably, they could come back and get the tape, if you didn't have somebody else watching it to make sure everything was followed.
But the companies don't typically have someone in-house that, to provide...
You don't have the person watching the cells.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, you can't legally do that, so, we hire outside, a third-party company to do that.
Yes, just a quick question. As we're moving through, we're upgrading our facilities and bringing more in line, how common do you think it'll be in our future to see more projects like this, like asbestos abatement? Because obviously this area's been one that's been needing upgrades for a little while. Uh, obviously, I don't have any issue with this, but in general, moving forward, do you think that we'll have more areas in town where we'll have to worry about these types of materials?
So this is one of our oldest facilities, it just happens to have the boiler left in place, um, our public works buildings, uh, fire department, wastewater plant, does not have that at this point because they've been updated. A police station wouldn't have had it because of construction, our rec department wouldn't have had it, so I don't foresee us having, running into asbestos per se, um, but you can't tell what's behind the wall sometimes.
Totally fair, just curious. Now, in the age of our facilities, I think, because the upgrade of the water facility, I don't think there's any boilers or asbestos in there either. They, I think what you may see is tile somewhere, but nothing of this level. This is good news. I hope, I hope it...
You see, other old building that we still own is the old, uh, the old pump station or the...
The water?
Yeah, that's what you were talking about just a minute ago, yeah.
But if you go in there, it's, it's modern.
Yeah.
I think the other, but I don't believe, I think we upgraded it a little while back, would have been the Stone School.
Stone School, my last survey did not indicate the needs to do that, uh, asbestos removal in there.
That's good.
Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Boden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that was my last.
It is.
Have a good evening.
Thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, we have a, uh, a nomination to consider, or an appointment to consider for Amy Nicholson for a, uh, position on the, uh, as a trustee to the library with a, um, term that expires March 2022, and she's currently serving, uh, and has a lot of experience in libraries, and looks like a great candidate. Could I have a motion? I don't need a motion, do I?
Yep.
You do? Okay, please.
I'll make a motion to approve Amy Nicholson as a library trustee.
Second.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Dumont.
Aye.
Council Boden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Correspondence.
Uh, resolutions.
Oh, oh, yeah, just thinking.
I forgot it.
Go ahead.
Resolution 2018-19-32, the South Main Street Bay Road Water and Sewer Main Replacement Project, whereas the South Main Street Bay Road Water mains at one hundred and twenty-five years old are in need of replacement, and whereas the Bay Road Sewer Main was at Old Clay Main, it was installed in the early nineteen hundreds and need a replacement, and whereas the Environmental Services Department followed the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services engineer procurement process to be eligible for grants and low-interest loans, and whereas Fussin' O'Neil was selected by the, the engineer to perform the engineer and engineering work for the South Main Street and Bay Road project for the sum of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Town Council authorized the town administrator enter an agreement with Fussin' O'Neil to perform the engineering for the South Main Street and Bay Road project. The Town Council also authorized the withdrawal of a hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars from the water and sewer capital reserve funds respectively to perform the engineering work. First reading March sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, uh, Resolution 2018-19-33, resolution relating to transferring funds from the downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund, whereas the May ten, twenty-eleven town meeting established the downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying the downtown TIF debt service, and whereas the town council has been appointed as agent to extend, expend, excuse me, from their capital reserve fund for this purpose, and whereas the town has paid debt service interest of six thousand, eighty-seven dollars, twenty-five cents on July fifteen, twenty eighteen, in principle, and interest totaling eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents on January fifteen, twenty nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve a transfer of ninety thousand, thirty-one dollars from the downtown TIF Capital Reserve Fund to, to the General Fund for the purpose of paying the fiscal year twenty nineteen downtown TIF debt service. Okay, Resolution 2018-19-34, resolution relating to transferring funds from the town cemetery's Capital Reserve Fund, whereas the town maintains cemetery monuments when necessary, engaging with the Pelzare family, and whereas the cemetery section has approved the funds, and whereas the town council has been appointed as agents to expend from the Capital Reserve Fund for this purpose, and now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby approve a transfer of four hundred and fifteen dollars from the town cemetery's Capital Reserve Fund to the General Fund, leaving a balance of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And last, Resolution 2018-19-35, in support of CACR eight and local self-government, whereas the town of Newmarket has spent the past several months investigating the adoption of a rights-based ordinance, which would enshrine on a local level greater authority for our town to adopt stronger regulations and controls outside of those previously set by the state, and whereas a subcommittee created by the town council to work with a rights-based ordinance organization determined through its legal council that adopting such an ordinance would be both invalid and non-enforceable due to the New Hampshire being, due to New Hampshire being a Dillon's rule state, and whereas the subcommittee determined through legal council that in order to adopt such ordinances at the town level, it would require a change at the state level, and whereas the New Hampshire General Court is currently considering the passage of CACR eight, which would amend the New Hampshire Constitution, allow from municipalities to adopt locally specific ordinance, ordinances for the betterment of their community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council to support the effort of expanding the right to local self-government through the adoption of CACR eight and other-like legislation introduced by Councilor Zachary Dumont. And with that, and with that, is there any correspondence to the town council? And are there any closing comments by town councilors? Seeing none? Yes, you can.
Thank you very much for serving in the town council. It was a pleasure to...
Thank you very much.
So...
Same here.
I miss you.
Thank you very much. I'll be around. Okay.
So, um, I do have one thing.
Sure.
There was an article in the paper, um, about the, uh, McAllen Dam, the, the warrant, um, article that we will be voting on, on Tuesday, and I thought it was really well-done. It was, um, so thank you for, again, for the work that you've done on that project, um, and a, and a big thank you to Diane Hardy, so, um, I think that it's been a long time coming, and she's really moved that project forward, so, um, I just wanted to mention that. And, and the Leverland Creek, Creek project also, I mean Diane was, has been a really big part of those projects for, uh, for many years, so, um, thank you to her.
I just wanna add something to that. Um, there'll be two mailers coming out from the town informing people about the issues. I, uh, I'm not sure if the water one has been received yet, is...
I think so.
Okay, so, and so either sometime on Friday or this weekend, there'll be another flyer about, um, the McAllen Dam, so, just, I'm wondering if they are paid for by the town, that this is informational purposes only.
And those have been, um, I think, very, very helpful, um, and straightforward, and, and, yeah, informational, um, so it's important to get the word out. I've heard, sort of related, but I've heard, uh, multiple times recently that people just don't, they feel like they don't have information, they don't know how to get information. Uh, I just talked to somebody, um, well, Roger Katie, who's running as a write-in candidate, said he just learned about the town newsletter for the first time, uh, the, you know, the digital newsletter, so, um, there's so little coverage in our local papers, um, and I think that people have really relied on that, uh, in years past. One of the things that someone suggested is maybe putting a flyer in the town clerk's office, that when people come to register their cars, they know that the town newsletter is available, um, and a link to it, so, um, I don't know what else we can do to spread the word, but I know that people are feeling disconnected, um, there's a certain personal responsibility that I think people have to get connected, a, and that's a different issue, but whatever we can do to, to help, I think is good.
I just wanna comment on that, because actually that's not an issue just for Newmarket, but for communities around, um, one of the downfalls of having one group own the two newspapers that cover us is that there's no competition as there used to be.
Right.
Um, so we're trying to get information as much as possible. One of the first buttons on the front page of the website is to subscribe to the news, so we do try to get that out there. Um, I could tell you that some communities have gone as far as they have now internal PR people that just get information out there. Uh, I'm gonna try to meet with, uh, our Channel thirteen to see what we can do that maybe refocus some of the, um, work that they do to, it turns into an informational department, not just, public information department, not just a Channel thirteen, um, portion, so that would be coming over the next years, year or so.
Another suggestion that was made, oh, sorry, did you want to, no, um, another suggestion that was made was, and I don't know that, I don't know how easy this is, having worked with, um, uh, electronic newsletters, to print the newsletter, even if it's just one or two copies to have at the library for people who don't have access...
Oh, if anybody wants it, we can print, we'll, we'll print them. If somebody comes in and says, I'd like a printed copy of it, we'll print it for them.
Yeah.
If not, no question at all. I know, we used to have individuals that would do that, but, and if the, I mean, and the, the issue is, we'd have to get the library to print it for us because it's just...
Right.
But they'd probably be willing if it was suggested.
I think that they would, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's more of a, kind of a suggestion to them, you know, and...
Even if it was just one copy, you know, to have available.
Yeah, and like I said, they can come to my office and pick one up as well, so...
Uh, I'm just gonna add a couple things. One is that I, I really wanna thank the, uh, Newmarket Business Association for their sponsorship last night. We, uh, we really missed a candidate's night, not having one at the last election, so I was really happy to see it back, and I was really happy to see the, uh, the room was, was pretty well-filled up, and it was a, a good discussion and a good group of, of people there, so I think that's, uh, that's a really healthy thing, it's really important. We, it's, uh, feel a lot, it was a little bit scary when we didn't have, uh, any candidates for, uh, for town council on there, uh, but it, it was good to see four write-in candidates and, uh, and good participation of the town there, it was really, uh, really, uh, made me feel better. Um, and, uh, I'd also just, would like to say, because, uh, you know, I mentioned I've been thanked a couple of times here tonight, and I appreciate the recognition on the dam committee, but the dam committee, the McAllen Dam Committee, has had a lot of other participants from the community. We have some really excellent expertise that, you know, Bill Archieri is a president, is a, is a professional in that area, Leo Filion has been associated with the dam forever, and all of those people have been very loyal and diligent in a, in a tremendously long, uh, process, and, uh, so, thanks to, thanks to everybody that's, uh, served on the dam committee, and, uh, um, you know, I, I think we, one of the things that was done well is we listened a lot to what, what Newmarket had to say about how they felt about their dam, and that's had a lot to do with where we are now, so, um...
So, and with that, I'd just say this is my last meeting for a while, and how much I've enjoyed working with all of you. It's been a great group of councillors, so thank you all very much. And with that, we're adjourned. Oops, what? Sorry.
I'd like to thank all the members of the council, not just this one, but past three years, it's been eye-opening. It's been a lot of, a lot of things learned over the past three years in working with the different people and different department heads, learning about the, you know, CIPs, and it's just been experience that everyone in Newmarket should, should try to go and learn. Wish the candidates best of luck in the election coming up, so. And also, I'd thank Steve and Dale and Tony and everyone here, so thank you very much. Patricia.
Here, here. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.